The April 15, 2025 Work Session of the Anne Randle County Council is called to order. Do any of my colleagues have any questions before we begin? Okay. We will begin with a presentation from the auditor, Ann Espy and Company. Madam Auditor, we will turn it over to you.
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, I'm on. Good morning, council members. Espy and Company is here to present the audits they informed on behalf of our office. Bill Seymour will take it away. Phil?
Thank you, Brenda. Good morning, everyone. My name is Bill Seymour. I'm the overall engagement partner with Espy and Company. I have with me Renata Reese, who's the overall audit manager over the engagements. We'll walk through our presentation. This includes all of our required disclosures at the completion of an audit to those charged with governments, governance, excuse me, meaning this body. Please feel free to stop me at any time with any questions that you may have. Scope of services, we were engaged to perform the following services: an audit of the June 30, 2024 financial statements, performance of the Uniform Guidance Single Audit, that is a federal grants compliance audit that's required for any organization that receives in excess of $750,000 from the federal government, audit of the OPEB Trust financial statements, audit of the 911 revenues and expenditures schedule, agreed-upon procedures over the landfill letter, agreed-upon procedures on various community grants, review of the Uniform Financial Report, preparation of the data collection form. The data collection form takes the single audit and puts it in a fit and format for the federal government, a review of the financial statements, and as well as working with management on a year-round basis. Summary of results, we've issued an unmodified or clean opinion on the financial statements. We've issued an unmodified or clean opinion over compliance. We've issued an unmodified opinion on the OPEB Trust financial statements, an unmodified opinion on the 911 revenues and expenditures schedule. We reported no findings on the landfill letter agreed-upon procedures. We are finalizing the grants agreed-upon procedures. We do have certain findings, which I'm going to discuss on a later slide. Through the course of the procedures that we performed, we did not discover any instances of fraud. However, a fraud audit would be different in scope. Generally accepted auditing standards, as well as government auditing standards, require that we perform certain procedures, maintain a healthy skepticism for fraud, look for fraud in areas that we tested, and through those limited procedures, we did not note any instances of fraud. We discovered no material weaknesses in internal controls. We had four significant deficiencies over compliance, and we had other findings and recommendations that we'll talk through. We received full cooperation from management. I want to thank Billy Penley, Kevin McMahon, and their entire team for the cooperation in getting us information. Want to thank Brenda and Charles for their assistance in getting through the audits. And we noted no audit journal entries on the financial statements. This is a pictorial of our audit approach. It's a risk-based audit approach. The idea is that we spend time planning to identify where the areas of greatest material financial misstatement risk are, look at how management has designed and operated controls to otherwise mitigate that risk, performance of various analytical procedures, substantive procedures, as well as audit standard required items. The entire process is designed to allow us to garner sufficient evidence to be able to issue that unmodified opinion, and we were able to garner such evidence. We look at controls at two different levels. One is the control environment, which we follow the COSO model of internal controls. That is the five interrelated components of the control environment: risk assessment, control activities, monitoring, and information and communication. You can see at the bottom, in all areas, our assessment was effective. We then dive down and we look at the key processes and underlying functions as they relate to the processes under financial reporting: treasury, cash, investments, debt, estimation. Financial reporting, we had one recommendation: revenue, expenditures, HR and payroll, fixed assets, grant compliance, which we had findings in our single audit. And then IT, we had certain recommendations that we've provided. We won't go into those in detail today because of the sensitive nature of IT items, but we had, we cleared two findings from prior year. We have another one that we believe is close to being implemented, and the other seven are currently being worked on, and we will provide separate reporting on that. The single audit, we tested seven major programs through there. We, total federal awards were $43 million. We tested 60% or approximately $26 million of those federal awards. Unfortunately, the county did not qualify as a low-risk audity, so our audit coverage had to be in excess of 40%, which you can see we were able to get there. The county was not a low-risk audity because in the 2023 audit, we had issued a do-not-comply opinion related to sub-recipient monitoring. Those items were largely corrected in the current year, so if you will, we moved from a do-not-comply last year to a clean, unmodified opinion, although we did have a couple of findings through the single audit process. And I'll touch base on those in a moment. So from the financial statements, during the course of the review, there were a number, when we received the first draft of the statements, there were a number of issues and items within the financial statements. Management had obtained, uses a third-party CPA firm to assist in that process to be able to provide. Effectively, what happened is, is we received the statements at the same time that the third-party CPA received the statements. And as a result, what we have is just really a recommendation of creation of a checklist or some other form, such that to ensure that when the auditors are provided the draft of the statements, that all of the QC processes have been complete. Additionally, in our 911 schedule, we had one out of 25 where we're not able to receive a copy of the invoice. It was a P-card transaction. Within that, unfortunately, professional standards require that we bring this to your attention because there wasn't support for the transaction. We could see the vendor. We believe that it was a proper transaction, however, without a receipt. And if you forgive the analogy here, you know, if somebody goes to Home Depot and all we see is a Home Depot charge, we're not able to verify that what was actually purchased was for the county, or whether it was for the person's personal use. Once again, one out of 25 to be there. For the single audit, we had a significant deficiency over sub-recipient monitoring, really related to the fact that within the agreements, there are certain items that are required to be included in the agreement, primarily clearly identifying the federal assistance listing number. That is where, so that way, that sub-recipient is able to go through and determine whether or not they need to have a single audit. In the event that they do need to have a single audit, they know which compliance supplement will be followed within there. And so there were four agreements that were missing those items. And then in the, we had for three out of 40 selections, there were certain invoices that were missing, once again, related to P-card transactions, that we were not able to verify that those were proper expenditures. And we've included in here management's response to each of those items to be there. For the grants agreed-upon procedures, what we've listed out here is the actual procedures that are performed. We've provided a draft of that report. There is one procedure that we are finalizing. We received the information late last week. We have a couple of questions on that, but we've received the majority of that information. At a summary level, you can kind of see that we obtained a listing of community grants for the fiscal year end in June 30 of '24 by department. Then with the assistance of the county auditor's office, we selected a sample of departments for testing: health partnerships for children, youth, and families, parks and recreation, social services department, the watershed protection and restoration fee, as well as the county executive, county administrative offices for video lottery terminal dollars, conference and visitors, the housing trust fund, community development administration, and the economic development corporation. We met with each of the department's personnel to walk through and understand the internal, the processes and the related internal controls for how they award, how they budget, and how they monitor those grants. And then we performed a sample of transactions and grants for each of those departments, looking at the grant agreement, testing invoices, and looking at what monitoring procedures were performed. And really, what we have is two levels of what we would consider, one of being observations and the others being findings or exceptions. From an operation, observation, excuse me, perspective, we were informed and we saw that there is a template that the county has provided for grant agreements. However, not all of the individual departments are using that template. Doesn't necessarily make it wrong, but it's an item for consideration for best practices. There isn't necessarily consistency across, between departments on who is approving certain levels of grants, and there is not a standard policy across the county for monitoring procedures. So if you will, kind of each department is doing items that they feel is best for those individual grants. Once again, we call those observations because they're not necessarily deficiencies, but from a best practices standpoint, you know, having a standard policy on what, you know, the county would expect for monitoring procedures, and then allowing the department to go through and tailor that with the approval of, you know, senior county management, is a better process because then everybody knows specifically what are the procedures that are being, that are expected to be performed and that are actually being performed. Through our testing, we noted a number of what we would term exceptions, or what we call findings, where we had one missing grant agreement, there wasn't an approval on an invoice, there was a difference between the amount that was actually funded versus what was included in the agreement, there was one where the department was relying upon an application as opposed to an agreement. There were a few that were missing signatures, and there was one grant that was paid in advance, so if you will, the county advanced 100% of the funding, even though the agreement spelled out that it would otherwise be a reimbursement basis. So in other words, the recipient of that grant would spend monies and then seek reimbursement from the county. Most grants, federal grants, operate in that manner. It protects the grantor because in the event that the grantee spends money on something that isn't allowable, gives the opportunity withhold funds until such time that the item is fixed. The remainder of our presentation goes through our required communications. This is our opportunity and responsibility to chat with you, kind of what's underneath the hood of the audit. This is really kind of, if you will, the negative disclosure part of the presentation in the event that, you know, there were accounting policies, application or quality of accounting policies that did not, that, you know, didn't meet standards or just barely acceptable, or where we had issues. If we had audit adjustments, if we noted fraud, material weaknesses, if we had disagreements with management on certain items, if we had serious difficulties, major issues, we did receive a management representation letter as part of the audit. We'd be happy to provide that to you if you would like to look at that. If, you know, if we had independence issues, if we had significant non-a test or non-audit services, or if there were significant subsequent events. We really have nothing of a negative item to disclose, other than some of the findings and things that I walked through earlier. So I know I went kind of fast through that, but I'll stop to see if there's any questions that we can address.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for that presentation. It's always good to see you guys. My question's related to the templates for the grants. Can you ballpark how many departments are using that template versus not?
How many was it?
There were two departments that used a different template.
Okay, so the vast majority are using the template?
Of the ones that we tested.
Of the ones? Okay, perfect. Thank you.
When you spoke about, you found some missing invoices for P-card transactions. Were you finding any of those lapses, were they being found in the same departments, or was it kind of spread across?
Spread across.
Okay, so it wasn't one particular?
Yeah, and P-cards are a blessing and a curse because, you know, it allows to eliminate or there's efficiency in the use of the card. Unfortunately, you're stuck with waiting for the receipt or other item to be provided. And I've been auditing P-cards now for the better part of over 20 years, and I can tell you that this is never going to change. So, and, you know, if it were, if we were seeing like 25 out of 25 or 40 out of 40, that would be a sign that there is a problem in the P-card program. You know, a lower percentage is kind of what happens, unfortunately.
And I'm grateful to my colleague for asking about the templates, you know, to make sure that sounds like that would be a good practice to have across the thing, is everyone using the same part. We have so many grants coming that there should be a basic standard procedure across every department for that. So, thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Pickard.
Can you, can y'all sort of go back in time and talk a little bit about the scope of the audit for the grants? What was, what were you asked to do originally?
So what, kind of, at a, in non-audit terms, what we were asked to do is to look at the local grant process. Because right now, and I'll step back for a moment, there are a number of federal grants that you receive either directly from the federal government or through the state of Maryland or other third parties, where you'll have a sub-recipient partner or a grantee partner. And there are set rules that are followed in those grants. Whereas the question was asked, what are the rules and what are the items that are, that the county is following for non-federal grants, i.e., local grants that are being provided? And so within that, the first item was is to understand what the population of the local grants were. Then from there, what we did is we, as I said, we worked through to determine where are we going to spend time looking at those based upon the volume of dollars that were being spent by individual departments? And then from there, we went and met with those departments and said, hey, tell us about your process. How do you award them? How do you go and monitor them? How is it that you're following up on items? And that's where, like I said before, what we found is that departments are doing, they're doing stuff, they're doing monitoring. They're, for the most part, items are being followed up on, but it isn't necessarily consistent across the organization. And one of the things that it took us longer to complete this than what we originally thought it would is getting to the right person was more of a challenge than, like when we do a financial statement audit, you know, it's because audits have happened lots of times, there's, it's kind of embedded into people's job descriptions, like, oh, yeah, your account's payable, so yeah, the auditor's going to meet with you. Whereas, you know, we would meet with one person, they would have some of the information, then we'd have to go to another person. And even when we kind of got towards the end and we're like, okay, here's what our first round of findings are, we met with management and we were provided even more information. So it's emblematic of a, you know, the county is a large organization, a decentralized organization, and our understanding is a audit of this type hadn't happened historically. And so it took time to find, you know, part of it was just kind of figuring it out, if you will, and how it was able, how it pulls together within that. Once we were able to get there, you know, things started to follow along.
Madam Chair. So, that's helpful. I appreciate that. You know, this is, these are tax dollars, so it's not like a family foundation philanthropy that is going out into the community and giving out grants to nonprofits. These are tax dollars. So I think the oversight is important. If we're going to support, I think we should, I vote to support our nonprofit community every year within our budget cycle, but as we, as we mature that program, it's changed over the last decade significantly, how we, how we do this work and grant these dollars. We certainly want to make sure, because they're tax dollars, that the grantees are using them to the end that they applied for them for. So figuring out how the oversight happens is important, I think, to this body, I would assume. I can only speak for myself, but...
And, you know, I would agree with you and add to that is often I think there is, you know, when an auditor shows up and says, hey, we want to look at this and understand, you know, and test items, often what it is is, oh, yeah, I looked at the money that was spent. Well, if you think about use of funds, taxpayer dollars, if you're a nonprofit organization, donor dollars, it's, you're really in a fiduciary, in either item, you're in a fiduciary type of role. It's not only did you spend the money on the right item, but did you get the accomplishment or the impact that you were seeking? Now, a performance part of that is not typically something that, from a financial statement audit perspective, that you would go through and look at because management determines, you know, we, like, for instance, we take your financial statements and we're comparing those against generally accepted accounting principles that's set forth by GAZB. When you go through and you have performance on a grant, you know, one grant can be completely different from another from what's being looked at. But having those monitoring, so that way, the county can represent to citizens, like, hey, you know, we said we were going to do this, this is how we did it, and we have processes and procedures in place to be able to determine it occurred.
Thank you. Any further questions? So please continue.
Well, that's all we have.
Thank you very much. We appreciate this. I know that we'll all be looking at it closely and following up with the administration to make sure that we have all proper controls and tracking in place, and so we are grateful for this every year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
We will now move on to Bill Number 2525. Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Hannah Dyer, Deputy Chief Administrative Officer, Claudia Rolle, our Animal Care and Control Administrator, Captain John Gilmer from the Police Department, and Lori Blair Klosmeyer, our Deputy County Attorney. So as you are all aware, Animal Care and Control is responsible for enforcing local and state laws, responding to animal-related complaints, conducting investigations regarding animal cruelty, investigating public safety concerns pertaining to animals, and providing temporary housing for animals for a variety of reasons, which include adoption of animals. Currently, Animal Care and Control is organized as an agency under the command of the Police Department within the Bureau of Administration Support Services Division. What Bill 2525 does is takes Animal Care and Control out from under the Police Department and makes it its own standalone department. I want to be very clear what this bill does not do. We did not make any changes to policy relating to animal care. It does not address dangerous and potentially dangerous animals. We left everything in the code as it currently is, largely intact, including lots of definitions. It merely makes this a standalone department and makes a couple of changes to some licensing schemes. This decision was made based on feedback and conversations that we had from a number of stakeholders and staff, as well as council members dating back to August of 2024. Before arriving at this proposal, we looked at current operations and challenges, as well as studied other organizational alternatives, and reached out to stakeholders and animal care experts for feedback. And although there are a variety of organizational structures across jurisdictions for animal care services, industry best practices support coordination of enforcement and shelter operations, as well as a direct government oversight role. Furthermore, creation of a standalone department will create minimal disruption to ongoing staff operations, as well as enhance partnership opportunities between the county and existing animal welfare organizations. Currently, we do not feel that Animal Care and Control duties are necessarily aligned with the primary missions and objectives, excuse me, of the Police Department, which creates some hierarchical and reporting challenges. And elevating Animal Care and Control to an independent department will alleviate these challenges and allow the department to prioritize fulfilling its mission effectively and efficiently. Currently, Animal Care and Control has 34 merit positions in staff. All of those positions, as well, as well as one that's currently assigned to inspections and permits, will be transferred out of the Police Department and into the new department with the annual budget bill. Positions will remain unchanged, including merit status classifications and bargaining units. County employment status for all of staff will also remain the same. Furthermore, the new standalone department will absorb certain administrative functions currently managed by the Police Department. We're currently looking at those roles and figuring out how that factors into the fiscal year 2026 budget. The standalone department will also have an exempt director, which is similar to other county departments. With that, we are happy to answer any questions. If anyone else has any additional comments they'd like to offer, I'm sure there are quite a few comments or questions, so.
So I'll start off. So you stated that we're not looking at, in creating this department, we're not looking at adding any staff, we're just shifting the existing staff over to animal welfare, I mean, Animal Care and Control.
So this bill does not add any new staff. It just creates the department. The county executive's fiscal '26 budget, which will be presented to all of you on May 1st, will include the staffing plan for the new department, which will definitely include the transfer of the existing positions. But the county executive is still wrapping up budget decisions, so, you know, definitely once we get to May 1st, we can point out any changes, any new changes, aside from the transfer of those positions that are included in the budget.
And all of the union represented employees will stay members of their unions?
Correct. That does not change with the creation of this new department.
Okay. So you stated that this bill is only to create this department, but we know there are some other things, like dangerous animals, that we haven't dealt with on that. Is there a plan to address those issues at another, Eddie?
Yes, so we're aware, you know, as we've discussed, kind of the scope of this bill is really just creating the new department and the streamlined licensing is really just creating the new department and the streamlined licensing structure. We see this as kind of getting our house in order. And then after creation of the new department, Claudia is prepared to tackle some of the other animal-related, more policy-related issues that are out there. Claudia, do you want to talk about that at all, or is that?
Just to mention that, that yes, that, you know, what you're saying about the scope of this bill, there are some other things to address overall in the ordinance. And I like the, the phrase of getting our house in order, just getting poised to really then make that next dive and, and correct some more things.
Yes, I had some questions about some of the licensing that did come up here. We had some discussions on this last week, but to bring up, one of the things that this bill does, it, and you've mentioned this before when we talked about it, but I would love for you to do it again here in the work session forum, is that we're no longer going to require licenses for cats. And so if you could explain the background for that.
Correct. Yeah, I'm actually glad you brought that up. So jurisdictions in the state across the country, some license cats, some don't. It's actually leaning on the don't. But if we look at reasons to, I feel like I'm talking about miniature pigs right now. If we look at reasons to license animals, there's a few reasons. Very often, it is rabies control, making sure that certain species have their rabies vaccine, then establishing ownership of a pet, and also helping a pet get back home if they do get lost. So for, for the rabies vaccination, it's already in code that dogs and cats, and now ferrets, need to get their rabies vaccine. It's there. Pet owners are being told. So this is sort of that extra layer of making sure. It's, it's already there. And then if a cat does come into our facility as, as a stray and they're reclaimed, we make sure that they have their rabies vaccine, either by us or proof from the owner. As far as establishing ownership, a license is not necessary. Ownership can be established with any veterinary record, including a rabies vaccination certificate. So there are various ways to establish ownership. And then as far as getting animals back home, if they are lost in their neighborhood, if they end up at our shelter, microchips, a collar with identifying, with identification, name, phone number, those are the best ways. Cats, the cats that are licensed in the county, they're really not, there's probably a few, they're really not walking around their house with a collar and their license tag, which is the size of a dog license tag. So there, there are just other ways, there's just better ways to help animals get back home when they get lost, including cats. So.
I know from our cat history that cats will not keep a collar on. So they find a way to get them off, no matter what.
Yeah, some will wear them, some will, yeah.
Yes. So, Ms. Raviyan.
Thank you. Sort of on a related topic, I'm just curious, what proportion of animals coming in as, as strays or lost animals actually have chips?
Unfortunately, I don't have a good answer on that. We will be doing better tracking as we get new software at the shelter. I would say not enough. Yeah. I mean, obviously, that's the best ticket home, is any kind of identification. We do, at our regular rabies clinics at the shelter, we also do low-cost microchips and, yeah.
So probably more do not have chips?
More do not than do.
Okay.
Definitely.
Okay. Thank you.
When you're talking about the different licensing, so we're not going to license cats anymore, what animals are licensed besides dogs? Do we license any animals besides dogs?
No.
So only dogs?
Yeah, as far as in, you know, as far as licensing an individual animal, just dogs. And that is mandated by the state. I wouldn't change it anyway, but it is mandated by the state.
Okay. And then you have, y'all monitor additional licenses, for instance, for kennels or pets, pet shops or things like that. All of that is now going to come back in-house for y'all. I suspect that the police weren't the ones who were inspecting those things, currently are not the ones who are inspecting.
It's the animal control officers.
Right. And the inspections and permits position that's moving back was, I know we moved that last year. Was that just the one who's issuing the license, or those people who are actually out inspecting the pet stores or the kennels or things like that?
It was, so last year, the idea was that we would consolidate the licensing and permitting under IMP, and that was the reason for moving that position. Although we were, we still, our intent was still that people could walk into the animal control office and have, and, you know, purchase a dog license or whatever it is there. We are not, after further conversation with stakeholders and further evaluation, conversations that Claudia's had with IMP, we're reversing that direction and moving the position back. So I can't recall off the top of my head the exact answer to your question, that one position would have been responsible both for kind of the licensing function, but then also inspections. But we can follow up on that.
My understanding is that the position that was pulled out of Animal Care and Control was actually a vacant kennel attendant position. So, yeah, just to clarify that.
And I do say that, reading the bill, I love the term cat fancier and dog fancier, but I was saying it, it, we're, you know, we get a fine line there between cat and dog fancier and animal hoarder to have, to come through. I would look forward to future bills that may, you know, when we get into some of the details, really specifying clear, you know, the different levels and the kind of licensing and things that are there. Some of the feedback we've received from this is there's not a good, the best record-keeping right now of where different fees are coming in and what's being charged for different things. And it's kind of unclear for different levels of dog and cat ownership to have. So, Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is an important piece of legislation, but it's also a big piece of legislation. The sections, for instance, the dangerous dog sections, those are just carryovers from what is in code, correct?
Correct. Yeah, we didn't make any substantive changes in those areas. It was just, you know, updating agency to department, for example. That happens a lot in this bill. So that's no substantive changes to the dangerous animals section.
Okay. And the same would be true for commercial kennel use. I just, when you scroll through, there were some folks in the public who've thought that maybe all of these capitalized sections were brand new to the code, but they're just carried over and noted as new because of the section change, et cetera.
So yes, a lot of the bill was really just updating the part, agency to department, and those kind of similar changes to create the new department. I will say that commercial kennel falls into kind of the streamlined licensing scheme that we're doing in this bill, but I'll have to defer to Lori or Claudia on whether there were any particular changes to commercial licenses, because I know we kept that category.
That's correct. So the reason that licensing is all in caps is because it's being moved and simplified. And it was easier to kind of repeal everything we had since it was being simplified, instead of showing all these red lines and brackets and that sort of thing, and then put that back in as all caps. So it's, other than being some changes to what is being licensed, it's pretty much the same language as what existed in the code before.
Appreciate that for the record, for those who are following this bill. And then, just in general, if there is a dangerous and vicious dog situation, even though the bill proposes moving the department into an independent agency, there would be the opportunity for support from the Police Department in those potentially dangerous situations. Is that correct?
Absolutely. Yes. Yes, it will still be a working relationship between Animal Care and Control and the Police Department. We're already arranging for that.
I assume so, but again, for the record.
And I do, it may be the same thing Claudia was going to say, but I know they're working on an MOU between the Police Department and Animal Control already, just to lay out the responsibilities and areas of overlap between the two, to make sure that there's kind of a seamless transition.
Perfect. Thank you.
Ms. Raviyan.
Thank you. So I know at our budget town halls, we had a lot of folks testifying about the need for a new facility. And I'm curious, I saw somewhere that a feasibility study is underway or will be taken, will be taken. How, I get the impression from the folks that testified that the facility conditions and the need for new facility are pretty significant. And so I'm just curious about capacity, you know, how frequently you hit, you know, how, how frequently, do you get to a place where you have to, do you have open kennels?
We have open kennels. It always varies. My first stop when I get to work is to check and look at capacity. The way, and this is a trend nationwide, and it varies from region to region, are, throughout the year, dog population goes up and down a little bit, but no big jumps. Cats, there's a big jump in spring and summer. And we handle, we handle that with foster homes, because we would run out of capacity for cats and kittens at certain times of year. Dogs, right now, we, I believe we have eight open kennels. We look especially before the weekend. Obviously, we have folks working over the weekend. But, you know, we're, we're sending some dogs out to rescue groups. We are putting, we're prioritizing certain dogs for foster. But there are plans, if we fully hit capacity, it's like, there's no more kennel. I, I will just say, I don't know if this was part of your question, really, but we are not euthanizing for space. I have had that removed from our dropdown menu of euthanasia reasons. There are other things that can be done, like putting out a public plea for, for more fosters. So we have some open kennels. It varies, and we keep a close eye on it.
Presumably, more kennels would still be beneficial. Or is that something that you would be looking for?
Yeah. I would say more kennels, but not a significant jump. I, I would look at what kinds of kennels. We don't have any kennels that are indoor/outdoor, which are very important for, for certain dogs and dogs that might be there on a dangerous dog hold for a long period of time. Configuration of the kennel, smaller housing rooms, our main dog room, when you go in and look at dogs for adoption, it's large, it's loud. So kind of smaller, smaller pods would be a good idea. But yeah, I would up the numbers somewhat.
And just one last question. I know this is, is there any type of, you know, sort of temporary soundproofing that, that might be available? I just, you know.
Right. And that, and that gets to the.
Even gluing foam onto the walls, kind of.
Yeah, that, that gets to the, that, that one room being so large. And the configuration of the kennels, it's so stressful in there that the noise level is loud. There have been studies done. I've, I've worked at places that there are sound baffles that are specifically made for kennels. Mixed results, I would say. It's something that keeps coming up in conversation, because it is loud. Yeah. Obviously, it's loud for the people, and it's super loud for, it's a stressful place for an animal to be. Exactly. Yeah.
I want to go back to the MOU with the Police Department. So you are going to, the new department will have the animal control officers, but if they get into anything that they think could be a potentially dangerous situation, so for instance, it's a hoarder situation of animals or things like that, the police will be on call to, will be there to work with the department to make sure that any animal control staff are safe and anything that would come up.
Yes, that will remain the same. If, if animal control officers are serving a search warrant, Police Department will, will be there. If the Police Department needs an assist, because they're going somewhere and there's what seems to be possibly an aggressive dog, our officers will assist. So there will continue.
Okay.
Yeah.
And y'all are working out that communication and dispatch and what all will happen with that?
Yeah, there will still be, there will still be a very open line between us.
All right. Any further questions? All right. I think that will do it for this morning. Thank you all for coming out.
Thank you.
Next up is Bill 2625, subdivision and development public charter schools. Mr. Smith, this is your bill.
Madam Chair, this is a simple adjustment, I guess, in some of the language that's embedded in our code to allow public charter schools that we have to be considered within how they process applications that are coming from, from those entities through planning and zoning. I think there was a mix-up or there was an issue where they weren't considered a part of the, the public school system. So they were being treated like a, a third-party entity. And I think we, this started the dialogue with the administration and myself to update some of the language so that when they were applying for applications within the planning and zoning process, that they would be treated just like any other school, as long as they were a public charter school, under the same sort of constraints and regulations that public schools fall under. So that, that's, that led to this piece of legislation. I'll certainly turn it over to the administration to see if I'm missing any words on that, but it was, from my understanding, just a way to expedite the opening of the school that's already there. Chesapeake Science Point, to be exact, is what started this, this conversation. And they are in the process of taking over a building that's next door to their current building, so that they can split the high school and the middle school. And the, in the process of that, they're, instead of them being treated through the normal process like the school system would be, in this instance, they are being treated like a, a third-party or external organization going through the PMZ process. And so I'll sort of pass it over to the admin to see if they agree with my sort of characterization of that situation, to try to help them remediate this in a, in a timely manner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Lynn Miller, our Assistant Planning and Zoning Officer, David Braun, our Engineering, Engineer Administrator from the Department of Public Works, and Lori Blair Klosmeyer, our Deputy County Attorney. We do generally agree with that. We do support the bill. We do think it needs one amendment, just to clarify, to make sure that the school that this is intended to benefit does get the benefit that it is seeking. But other than that, we're comfortable with it, and we're happy to answer any questions.
I do have a question. So we have charter schools in the county, and we also have contract schools in the county that are a little different than the charter schools. Should this bill be amended to include the contract schools as well? That's Lori. I'm kind of asking you from the, from the law side.
I can take a look at that. I have not considered that. I'll take a look and see if they, how they come under the education article.
Yes. When I, I mean, when I looked at, I didn't look extensively, but when I looked at the state code, they only say charter schools. But we definitely designate, of our ones here in the county, at least two are contract schools. So have, they have a little different attendance requirements and zones. And so I would just want to make sure that they are included under this as well.
Okay. I'll take a look.
Ms. Pickard.
So I'm, I think we need to change the code for the situation at hand, but you said there's a, you think to make it apply, to solve the problem at hand, there's an, there's an amendment needed. Can you be a little more?
Sure. So it says, the, the legislation says, let's see, article applies to all land located in the county, except it's not applied to land owned or leased and developed by the county, the Board of Education, or public charter schools as defined in Section 9102 of the education article of the state code. We think it needs to say that's intended to be used as a charter school, because currently, I believe the, the location where it is, where this building is, is not a charter school. And the, the land is not owned by a charter school, right? But it's going to be a charter school. Yep.
Any other comments or questions? All right. Thank you very much. Next is Bill 2725, Indian Hills Special Community Benefit District. Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Lynn Miller, our Assistant Planning and Zoning Officer, David Braun, our Engineering,
With me at the table, I have Chris Trumbauer, our Budget Officer, and Lori Blair Klosmeyer, our Deputy County Attorney. So this bill is submitted at the request of the Indian Hills Community Association, which administers the Indian Hills SCVD. It places a multi-year obligation on the Community Benefits District in the amount of $190,000 for a loan from First Citizens Bank for 69 months, for them to replace their playground. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions, comments? Ms. Fiedler.
Playgrounds are surprisingly expensive.
They are.
Yes, they are.
I support this legislation.
They are surprisingly expensive. All right, there are no further questions? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Trumbauer. Bill 2825 is rules and procedures for the Board of Appeals. Good morning.
Hey. Okay.
Mr. Hunt.
Hi, Deana Bussie, Clerk to the Board of Appeals. Good morning.
Good morning. So I, I have put in this bill for the Board of Appeals, they have just gone through and updated their rules a little bit, nothing, nothing significant, but updating some things, just like we did as a council recent, you know, and then the not-so-distant future when we said we no longer have to post things on a bulletin board. So they're doing some of the same type modernization. Is there anything specifically you would like to highlight for us?
No, I don't think so. We're just trying to catch up with how we actually do things.
To bring the procedures up to date. So are there any questions, concerns? So, short and sweet, thank you for coming out. We appreciate you all, and we appreciate the efforts to bring things up to, up to date. So, all right. Bill number 2925, large animal veterinarian clinics, this is your bill, Ms. Ledbetter?
Yes, thank you. This bill is actually brought at the request of the Ad Commission. There is a need for more large animal veterinary clinics to serve our agricultural community, and so this bill would allow a conditional use on RA property for large animal veterinary clinics to open. The conditions are listed. I believe, from talking to Mr. Hunt, that the administration wants to discuss a tightening up of the language a little bit further, so I will be happy to meet and discuss that, so we can get this right along, and we'll, with the Ad Commission in that conversation as well. But, yeah, happy to take any questions.
Do we have any questions? I think you explained it well, Ms. Ledbetter. Everybody's, no questions pending. Mr. Hunt, anything from the administration?
Ethan Hunt for the administration. I have Lynn Miller, our Assistant Planning and Zoning Officer, and Lori Blair Klosmeyer, our Deputy County Attorney. We support the legislation, appreciate the sponsor bringing it, and we're going to meet to make one small change. Or discuss one small change. Thanks.
All right. Okay, well, then we will move on to Bill number 3025. This is BWI mixed-use overlay area. Mr. Smith, this is your bill.
Well, I've been sort of involved with meeting with various stakeholders throughout the comprehensive rezoning sort of process that we've been doing with Region 1. There have been several discussions about whether or not something needed a zoning change and whether or not it fell into that. Some of the area that were, that sort of fell into that discussion during this period was the BWI overlay area, and whether or not zoning changes within that particular bubble would be sufficient to address the needs of the citizens who were requesting it. Ultimately, ultimately, it was decided and determined that this would be a better use for the overlay instead of a zoning change, particularly when we're adjusting the line. And so this added, this particular bill adds, I think, a clarification on the type of housing that could exist within the BWI overlay, as well as slightly adjust the lines to include a portion of the property of, of the, of one of the owners who owns the other corresponding, so it's a slight addition to the, I want to say the east of that property near BWI Airport. And so those are the two major things that it does with this legislation. And so, it's so weird, because I was getting ready to say motion to adopt, like this is an amendment or something like that, and I keep... But I'll turn it over, I guess, to the administration to see if they have any corresponding remarks about it.
Mr. Hunt?
Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me, I have Lynn Miller, our Assistant Planning and Zoning Officer, and Lori Blair Klosmeyer, our Deputy County Attorney. We support this, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? No one? Ms. Pickard, you're being very quiet this morning.
I forgot to take my time.
All right, I think that's it. No further questions on there? So, all right, is there anything else that any member would like to discuss this morning? Okay. Based on Section 3305B7 of the General provisions article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, the council's permitted to meet in closed session to consult with counsel to obtain legal advice. May I have a motion to meet in closed session pursuant to Section 3305B7 to consult with counsel to obtain legal advice?
Ledbetter, so moved.
Second.
Madam Secretary, please call the role to hold a closed meeting in accordance with the section stated.
Ms. Fiedler.
She's left.
Oh, she has left, sorry.
She had to, she had to scoot out.
Ms. Robian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith. Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Ms. Revulki is absent, and Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Five in the affirmative, two absent, the motion to go into a closed session has passed.
Okay, is there any other business any council member would like to bring before the county council at this time? Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. County Council is adjourned to go into our closed session. The council is adjourned to the public until Monday, April 21st, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. for our next legislative session in our chambers.